Good evening, everyone. We welcome everybody to October's Clay County Board of Education's regular meeting. Ms. Crawford this time is going to read our Clay County Schools' mission statement.
The mission of Clay County Schools is to build high-quality learning environments that ensure all students learn at high levels.
And just a couple of quick announcements. November twenty-second will be our regular meeting in November, and that'll be at six o'clock again. And also, we're going to start adding the pledge allegiance. The plan was to do that this evening, but unfortunately, our flags have not arrived. So hopefully, that'll be here so that we can start that at the next board meeting. Any questions or comments? Anything?
Well, I would just apologize if they're not here. I ordered them two days after the last board meeting, but as many of you probably know, it's almost impossible to get anything right now. So the only thing I got was the North Carolina flag. Evidently, there's a lot more of those available than American flags. But I haven't gotten any of the poles or anything yet. Hopefully, by next month, we'll have them.
Sounds good. So I will entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as it was presented and as it was emailed to you.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Ms. Crawford, second. Ms. Crawford, second. I'm favored. And Mr. Cole has some recognitions to start with. National Principal.
Yes, I guess possibly I can. Just very quickly, I would ask, we have all four of our principals here. I'd ask the four of them to stand right now. I cannot let this board meeting go by. October is National Principals Month, and I just wanted everyone in the public to recognize that we have a great principal team. I could not ask for better. And they have taken a really tough situation this year, and I think they've done a fantastic job in the face of a lot of competing circumstances and politics and viewpoints and everything else. And I just want them to know how much I appreciate them and that I could not do the job that I do without them. We make almost every decision together, and that, I don't know, I just appreciate every one of them, and I wanted the public to hear me say that. And I just ask that we give them.
Thank you, Ms. Cole. And thank you, principals, because the board greatly appreciate all you guys do day-to-day as well. So thank y'all very much. Next, we have public comment, and just a reminder that public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Based on Policy Code 2310, board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification points made by the presenter, and the board attorney or designated will hold the total public comment time to thirty total minutes, except by majority vote at the board. So I think we have two signed up proceeding, and we'll start with Mr. Paul Rose.
I'm going to best to stay within three minutes. Paul Rose, I know that, I know, recognize the policy that you have specifically not to answer questions posed by the public during this public comment, which is why I submitted the comment a couple of meetings ago to asking you to consider how open the open meeting laws are really being followed by the current board operations. And I haven't, I've yet to see that, so I officially submitted that as a letter. Haven't seen that on the agenda yet. So if there's a change to that policy, I'd like to know what that is. More importantly, one of the things that was discussed over the last couple of meetings was the recently approved 2010 or 2021 educational objectives and the concept of CRT, what everybody's worried about today. The governor has recently vetoed the bill that approved. There was a bill that was approved that mitigated a lot of the real concerns that showed up in those new learning objectives. But since the governor has vetoed that, that's back on the table as a real concern to the community. Going through the board's manual, I told you this is what I do at three o'clock in the morning. In your policy, Code 1010, Board Authority and Duties, it specifically says "The board will establish general policies in keeping with the needs of the community." One of the comments I made earlier was, even though a lot of us in the room, you can look around, most of the people no longer have kids in the school, may have grandkids in the school, but as a community, they're all our kids. And even though a lot of the parents whose kids are in school, they may be home, they may be working multiple jobs, they don't always have the ability to come to the meetings. But as these are all our kids as a community, we'll speak on their behalf if we, as we feel fit. One of the things that I got to looking at is the specifics in developing the curriculum, because that was a long discussion over the last couple of meetings as to the ins and outs of how that really occurs. And I learned through reading your manual that the superintendent develops recommendations pertaining to the educational program and facility needs, which are then vetted, discussed, and approved or commented on by the board. It also says that the, in your policy 1310, parental involvement, the Clay County Board of Education recognizes the critical role of parents in the education of their children and in the schools, as well as recognizes the trust and accountability that it owes to the citizens, staff, parents, and students in the manner in which it transacts its business of the school system, including developing the curriculum. Yeah, I'm up a lot of nights at three o'clock in the morning. It's the goal of the Board of Education that every student be provided the opportunity to receive a sound, basic education, which offers the students an opportunity to learn. And there's a whole bunch of things that come under that, but one of them that talks directly to a lot of the things that are hot buttons within the CRT framework is item six, foster respect and appreciation for cultural and ideological diversity and differences, and it stops there. But if you go to the 2021 Learning Objectives and going through the crosswalk document in the, I think it's the ninth grade social studies, where 2010 called for kids to learn to analyze political, economic, and social and religious issues that lead to conflicts, domestic and foreign conflicts participated in by America in terms of participants, strategies, opposition, and results. The 2021 objective is boiled down to explain the causes and effects of various domestic conflicts in terms of race, gender, political, economic, and social factors. And that's a much different objective than teaching the kids, giving the kids an opportunity to learn from history. It's telling them what filters through which they should assess that history. And that, as I said before, should be something learned from families, from their churches, from the community as the child develops, not taught by the school as part of their basic education. And I'm very interested in how Superintendent Cole, you'll make this, develop the, what's called the Curriculum Committee, which is said must seek input from parents, the community, and experts in order to be full, to make fully informed decisions. So I hear there's a lot of community members that are more than anxious, as are, I know, all aspects of the school system, to participate in adding their two cents to making that the best curriculum for all of our kids in Hayesville. Thank you.
Any questions or clarification for Mr. Rose?
Just as a, as a point of clarification, I do this every month when, when Mr. Rose points this out. Again, the social studies standards are state standards, and this board has nothing to do any more than any other regular citizen does in speaking to your state representatives, to your governor, to your state superintendent of instruction, or your state school board members on what these state standards are with any subject, including social studies. Once those standards are approved, which they were last year, now we are currently in Clay County Schools, working towards creating a curriculum for this. Primarily, right now, our social studies teachers are working on putting together something. We're currently still using the 2010 standards until we have that curriculum in place. So once we have that in place and we have something for the public to review, we will then create a committee in order to review those and seek feedback from the community and work on it from there. We're just not quite there yet.
Next, we have Mr. Dwight Moss.
Well, I've thought about not speaking at all because I'm not completely up to date, but the more I read about CRT, the less I like it, and I don't believe we need it in Clay County. I don't need, believe we need critical race theory taught. I don't need, believe, believe that we need gender identification taught. And you have people in this community who will help fund a curriculum if necessary, if, if the three are not acceptable. Earlier this year, I heard that there were three options, and the best one was not very good. And I'm going to quit with that because I've got to investigate more exactly what it is. I've seen some vulgar pictures that are supposedly circulating in books in North Carolina, their school books. And that kind of got me up in the on, so I don't know, I don't know enough to speak intelligently, except, you know, fundamentals of this country need to be taught above all else, and unity. And this teaching of this, what about my, my black grandchildren? How do we identify them? They're white, and they're black, or what do they, what do they say they are? I don't like this kind of teaching. I'll just tell you right now. And anyway, with that, I'm finished for this month. I hope to be back next month. Thank you.
Just real quick, we were not given three options or any options as far as a curriculum for our social studies. We were given state standards and a document from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction of some things that we can use, but we're not given any choices on curriculum. We, we create or buy the curriculum that the board chooses to use, but we don't have any choices.
So, so you don't have, you don't have a choice?
Well, nothing was given to us as a choice. No, we elect to either build a curriculum or we elect to buy a curriculum that someone has created, but there's no textbook company that has created a curriculum for the North Carolina Social Studies Standards that were approved in 2021.
Okay, well, well, I want to know, let you know, I'm supportive of things that are good for our kids, Mr. Rose.
Thank you. So just, at this time, we always put in a break. If anyone would like to leave at this time because you kind of said your piece, or if you want to stay, then certainly you can stay. So if there was anyone that wanted to leave, we just kind of plug in a minute or two here to take a break. Okay.
All right. If not, we'll move into the report section of the agenda, and we'll start with the Hayesville Primary School Beginning of Year Reading Data Presentation. Ms. Bree's right, and Ms. Heather.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm Heather Plemons. I'm the principal at Hayesville Primary School. And this is Bree's Raxter. She's our instructional coach, and she is filling a newly added position this year, and I am just thrilled with what she's been able to accomplish for our students and for our teachers. And so she's going to share the beginning-of-the-year data with you that we've gathered from iReady and M-class. Those are our two assessment tools that we have for our students in Hayesville Primary School in grades K-2. Good afternoon. This was a presentation that I also shared with our teachers during our PLCs, which we have every Tuesday. It's professional learning communities. And this year, we've really been spending a lot of time looking at just our core instruction. So I know Heather shared a couple of meetings ago about the MTSS system and, and how we are looking at core instruction and along with our interventions and the things that we're doing for our students. And so this gives you a little bit about where our students are. The state, I guess you could say, re-adopted because we've had M-class before. But for us in our littles at primary, we use M-class, and that is a state adoption this year for reading. And it measures their letter recognition, the phonics part of reading, and some of the comprehension. And we also still have iReady, which we, they have been using before, and it does the same also with math. So I had this picture to begin with because I know for a lot of teachers that data seems to be scary. And a lot of times when we don't understand something, we tend to ignore it or just not use it in the forefront. And so we had a little shark theme talking about diving into our data. I'm going to go through just real quick about the two different assessments, and again, we're focused on reading. We will get to math, I promise, but this will just go and show reading. Overall, in our whole school for the primary, our overall placement, as you can see, and we like to have color coded because it's a visual for parents, and this same information was given to the parents when the teachers did their parent conferences last week. And we then went and specifically looked, especially for our littles, the phonological awareness and the phonics two pieces. And I want to briefly just explain what those are so it'll help you understand this data a little bit better. So our foundation in reading, especially for our littles, is your letter recognition and your sounds. And that has a lot to do with our, the phonological awareness. It's like the big ideas of reading, and that's your basis. That's your foundation. And then the next part is your phonics, and where they are learning to use those sounds and those letters and blendings and rhymings, and eventually get into their reading and their comprehension. And so those two pieces, we've really looked at a lot with our core instruction, and I feel like the two pieces that we and the board and everybody's approved with the Hegarty and the foundations are two pieces that are really going to help our core instruction and our teachers. And we've already seen our teachers using those. They've had training, and they have even already said they've seen some differences in their students because we know with COVID that we are dealing and seeing a lot of the learning loss this year. And that's why we specifically looked at these two pieces even for second grade. Second grade usually will have a little bit, and they do the foundations, but then they move on to fluency and comprehension. But this year, we're still seeing a lot of second grades, second graders coming in and needing some of those foundational pieces. So here's where we were in the phonological awareness overall in the school, and here's where we were in the phonics. And we talked about even in our core instruction of how we definitely want to work with these students that are showing in yellow and in red especially, but we also want to make sure that we are targeting those students that might be advanced or that can move on because a lot of times those students seem to be the ones that are overlooked a little bit. We then divided this up into each grade level because we meet with them separately. So we meet with kindergarten, first, and second during their planning time, during their PLCs. And we, again, we use the iReady and the M-class, and I'll explain a little bit more of the M-class in just a minute. We did learn something today when we were looking at our MTSS because a lot of times when we think about the, the students that are in yellow, that it's a whole grade level below. And I'm going to let Heather explain what we learned today.
Well, we have our district-wide MTSS meeting today, so we have the MTSS leads from each school meet together. Let me pull this down so you can hear me better. So we all met together, and Ms. Wallace is the MTSS lead in the middle school, and she had retained something from a previous training that the yellow actually means that if you were given this assessment at the end of the year, or if this was an end-of-the-year assessment and you were given this assessment now, that you're scoring at beginning-grade level. So actually, those yellows aren't quite as scary as we thought they were. They're, they're right there where they should be for beginning of the year. Now, what we definitely want to do is, as the year goes on, we definitely want to progress those students into the greens and hopefully into the blues as well. So those are, that's our prime growth area right there. It's that group that's in yellow.
As you can see, of course, at, when I first put this together, I was telling Heather, I was like, oh, we don't have anybody that's two grades below a kindergarten, and realizing they wouldn't have two years below kindergarten. Always trying to look at the positive side of things. But you can tell, just like Heather said, our yellows are the ones that have the biggest chance to grow. And I feel like if we're putting into place in our PLCs and helping our teachers sort of realign our core instruction, we've got Hegarty and our foundations is going to cover those pieces and looking at our core reading instruction and ready. We also have a new piece of vocabulary that's coming up. I feel like our core instruction is only going to strengthen, and I feel like the teachers, you can't find hard work, more hard-working teachers than you can here. I see it every day. And so we talked about how now that we look at this data, and I'll go through each one real quick, is what we do with it. Because it's nice just to be able to see colors and bubbles and whatever, but what do we do with it is the most important part. So here's where kindergarten is overall. Then we split up the two foundational pieces of phonological awareness. We know that a lot of our kindergartens didn't go to preschool or were in person last year. So a lot of this was expected. M-class is very similar, except for the assessment is one-on-one with the teacher and the student. And again, it looks and starts at letter sounds, and it moves on up into comprehension and even vocabulary. I used the same colors so you'll be able to see, you know, nine percent of our kindergartners are advanced in overall scores. So those are the students we also want to target. We also split that and looked at the main piece of the phonemic awareness because if they don't know their letters and sounds, they can't read. Second grade, you can, I'm sorry, first grade, you can see, again, we've got a large portion of students that are in that yellow. Still have some of those greens and blues. So yellow group is the group that we're really going to target. I'll talk a little bit about what we're hoping to do this year with those students. Did the same thing with them, splitting those two components, phonological awareness and the phonics. And you can see here with our first grade, they've got a pretty large portion, thirty-two percent yellow, forty-three percent red. Same thing with phonemic awareness. And last but not least, the second grade, you can see that they do show a lot more in the two grade below. Not as much as in the yellow. A lot of the teachers say they're either here or here, sometimes not a lot in the middle. But you can see the phonological awareness is higher than even in the kindergarten and first grade. Same thing with their phonics. M-class, fifty-three percent is below, and their composite score, fifty-five in phonemic awareness. So we talked in our piece at PLC about how, as, as the teachers, after we've looked at core instruction and we know what the places that we're switching some things and moving some stuff around, what do we do now? And one of the things besides the PLCs, we're also doing monthly data chats and, and checks each month. So as the students are growing and learning, they will be progress monitored by the teachers on these specific domains. We're also getting letters training for, from the state, and that is incorporating a lot of some of our reading instruction. Our care team and our MTSS system is in place. We've already had one meeting. We're getting ready to have another one. This is where the teachers can come to us to present and refer a student that they are worried about so that way we can work on some interventions. Those are some, also things we're doing in our PLCs is figuring out what interventions we can use that would be beneficial. I've also started on Thursdays, and this was an option, an optional thing that they could do because it is during their planning, but we have a five-week course called Happy Apples, and we started with guide of reading. And so the teachers are getting some more in-depth and specific training on some of those things. Our biggest thing that you'll hear all the time, you know, time, how much, you know, we need more time, we need more time with our kids, but our biggest things is more hands. We know, especially looking at that first and second grade, we need more hands-on, that they can be pulling students to work in small groups because we know, and the research has shown that small groups are crucial and important and help the students be able to get those interventions needed. Whenever your core instruction is given to everybody, we know that the small groups is just as important as that core instruction. I know first grade, seems like a long, long time ago, used to have assistants. And I would love to see that come back because we've seen in the data, we've seen in our students, they need our help. And not, and I'm not saying our teachers aren't fabulous because they are, but they've got two hands, and they're doing the best that they can. So I would love to see just some more support and help. I feel like instructional-wise, they're, they're getting a lot of that in our PLCs, but they just need more hands in those classrooms to help pull students in small groups. If you want to see how awesome and well those teachers do as with what they have, you need to go down to kindergarten when they have about eighteen students, and they're working in a small group, and all of them just moving and doing different things. And our first and second grade teams are doing amazing job. And so I commend them and that Heather doing all that they're doing. But just like anything, we could always use more help. Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for us?
When y'all are talking about more help, I'm assuming volunteers are a big, would be a big asset because, I mean, we, of course, we got that funds to hire.
We do have volunteers. The communities for students are, they are available to help employ and do specific skills, rote memorizations, sight words, things like that, absolutely. We would always advocate, though, to have the extra live body in the classrooms if that ever becomes an option. We would love to have teacher assistants or floating teacher assistants at the first or second grade. We've talked a lot about our core instruction, and the two words that come up in every article, every book, every training that we've been doing the past couple of weeks is explicit and systematic. And it talks about how crucial important that students get that training and that, that constant bringing that same information up in front of them. And I feel like if we had some extra help that was consistent, that we could use our PLCs even to train them to be able to go into this classroom and work with the students on what they need.
Just members of the board, you'll recall, maybe you will, about, I guess, probably ten years ago or so in the state of North Carolina, every kindergarten through third-grade classroom had a teacher assistant. And that funding was cut at the step, that was obviously a state budget item, and it was cut, like I said, ten or so years ago and limited to kindergarten only. And so I think what they're speaking of is they have a teacher assistant in each of our seven kindergarten classrooms. We have added some teacher assistants as part of our federally, federal ESER plan that will have a place for the next three years. But of course, once those federal pandemic funds run out to close learning gaps, we'll no longer have that funding. But certainly, it would be great if, if our state, first of all, has a budget, and second of all, if it would fund a teacher assistant for every kindergarten through third-grade classroom, it'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Next, we have Ms. Crawford with the elementary school.
My presentation is not as pretty and cute as the primary schools. Oh, goodness. They're a tough act to follow. So I just want to share a little bit. We're, I'm only going to review iReady day. So I just want to share a little bit, we're, I'm only going to review iReady data with you today, that's the primary tool that we use in upper elementary, and until we get to EOGs. So we'll definitely do some check-ins and things like that, but our consistent piece that we use throughout the year is iReady. And so, I want to just kind of share a few things about what we've noticed in our iReady data and what our plans are to address the needs that we have. So if you take a look at this, look at that shows up, the tier one, tier two, and tier three triangle, this is for overall reading in grades three through five. And so, those numbers are probably a little bit hard for you to see, but I wanted to make sure this didn't get cut off, because I think there's some important data there too for you to review. But we have 39% of our kids are green or on grade level, and we have 32% of our kids that are yellow. And so thinking about our goals for this year, where iReady is concerned, is in all of these slides, almost all of them, if we can pull our yellows to greens, we're going to be between 70 and 80% in almost every area, every grade level, every subject. And so that's kind of an unofficial goal for us. You'll be hearing about our school improvement plan next month, and that's focused on EOG scores. But our goal for iReady as well is to bring those yellows to greens, and then of course, alongside that is to bring our reds into the yellows, you know, and so that's kind of our overarching plan where iReady is concerned. So I want to point out just a few things here. If you look at, this breaks it down by the domain, phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, and comprehension are the bottom two. So if you notice, one of our biggest areas of red is in phonics. That's not surprising at all, because if you think about our third graders, for example, they haven't had a normal year of kindergarten, a normal year of school since kindergarten. And we know that we primarily focus on phonics skills in K-2. So in order to combat that, we have added foundations at the third grade level to kind of reinforce and fill any gaps that we have. Foundations is the phonics program that's used in K-2, so we're continuing that into grade three. So that's an important piece. We've been a little bit delayed with our start with that because of shipping, and so those things were ordered back in July and we're still not here. So we're kind of doing what we can with the materials we've received, but that's definitely something that we're eager to get started. Also, you'll notice that we have a large section of yellow right here for vocabulary. So we do not have a systematic vocabulary program in K-5, and so our instructional coaches have made a plea to Mr. Cole about our need for a systematic instruction program for vocabulary. And as of, what, two weeks ago, Mr. Cole has agreed to fund that for the schools. For, and that's something that our instructional coaches and Ms. Clemmons and I worked on together, so we are adding a systematic vocabulary instruction program for K-5 that should be starting any day now. Really, really excited about that, because it's a program that is aligned to the science of reading, which is the training that our teachers are going through. It's done independently, it homes in on technical vocabulary related to science and social studies. So we're really excited about that, because we know that that will increase their proficiency in understanding informational text, so it builds together. So we're very thankful for the support and love that's been poured into our school. I just want to echo what Ms. Clemmons said, having an instructional coach has been life-changing for our schools. And we were also blessed to receive a teacher assistant from our ESER funding. And those two things together have allowed us to improve our intervention system tenfold. And so, between that and the things that we've been able to use our ESER funds and our instructional supply funds and Title I funds and all the pots to provide, to really be strategic in targeting our skills, I think is really worthwhile and meaningful and is going to have huge impacts in our schools. So I just want to say thank you to the board, thank you to Mr. Cole and Angel for making sure that we have what we need to address these gaps that we have. And so, as we look through the grade levels, you're not going to see huge differences. You're going to see, you're going to see large red for phonics. And so, I mentioned that we've added foundations at grade three. We've also added a program called Phonics for Reading, that's a curriculum associate's product. It goes along with Ready Reading, which is our core instructional program for comprehension. And so we're going to be using that to target our fourth and fifth graders in phonics as well. Of course, if you look at vocabulary on every one of these slides, you can see that's our largest yellow. So if we can target our yellows in each of these grade levels, then our ability to bring kids from yellow to green is going to be substantial. And so it's kind of all the same, you're going to see large gaps in phonics and large gaps in vocabulary that we need to address. And we've got the skills in place and the programs in place to address those things. I also want to point out, our teachers are doing science of reading training, as you know, and so we have just finished the training for unit one, and we're going to be doing unit two in December. So they have eight units to do over the next two years. We are already learning tons that we're excited about implementing. We've added the word vocabulary program. Something I didn't mention about the vocabulary program that we're adopting is it is aligned to our scholastic-level bookroom. And so, our scholastic-level bookroom is something that the primary school got last year and is something that we've gotten this year. And so, we're super excited about having that, because the other area that I haven't really talked about very much on our slides is comprehension, and that will allow us to really target our kids in comprehension where they are. We've already got plans in the works for the future about doing guided reading and guided reading groups and providing professional development. We've kind of put that on hold because of science of reading, but that's something that we want to make sure that our teachers are trained in, so that we can really utilize that leveled bookroom. So, those are our plans for reading. In terms of math, you will notice that our math overall, we have more yellows in math than we do.
Ms. Godfrey?
Yes.
Do you want to stop here and just see if the board?
Oh, about reading?
Is it about reading specifically?
Yeah, okay. So you'll notice in math, we have a smaller amount of green and a larger amount of yellow. But I think that's pretty common with what we've seen related to COVID, is that math is very difficult to teach remotely, and those skills, when not practiced routinely, are easily lost. And you'll also look at our domains, between numbers, operations, algebra, and algebra thinking, measurement, data, and geometry, they're all pretty even. So, it's a little bit more difficult to pinpoint a specific areas that we're going to work on as a whole. So we're really going to have to work on identifying those by students and utilizing small groups to address those issues. But that's third grade, I mean, excuse me, that's third through fifth overall. And again, if you combine tier one and tier two, we're at 75%. So that's kind of our goal, is to bring that large chunk of yellow down into the green over the course of this year. I think this died, Adrian. Okay, so this is grade three, and you can see, we have 15% in green, 49% in yellow. And so I want to just echo what Ms. Clemmons said, that if you read the parent reports for iReady, if your student is in yellow, it says approaching grade level. So yellow's not terrible. Yellow means that they're coming to us with skills that we can easily capture them, you know, into on-grade level. We also have to keep in mind that my students took this August the 30th and September the 1st. So this data already is outdated, but worth bringing up, so you guys can see our goals. Go ahead. Okay. So this is grade four, and it looks very much the same across the board. And grade five, we have a little bit higher green percentage there, but overall, you can see in our domains, we're pretty much consistent across the board. So to talk to you a little bit about what we're doing to target our weaknesses in math is, we use our ESER funds to purchase a comprehensive math intervention program. And so, it targets all domains and it has levels A, B, and C for each domain. So we have the materials we need to be able to target students' weaknesses, no matter what they are. That was an expensive purchase that we were able to purchase using our ESER funding, and I'm very excited and hopeful for what that will mean for our students. This is also our first year of using Ready Classroom Math, and the primary school implemented that last year. We're very excited to have it this year, because we feel like our students are going to show really good gains from that. That also gives them access to the teacher toolbox, which allows them to pull differentiated materials for our students. We're using a program called Spring Math to work on fact fluency. And also, our science of reading training is also going to impact our ability to help our students decode word problems and the comprehension of their word problems. And so, they're already learning about how to apply their training into other content areas, and so we're looking forward to seeing those gains as well. We know where much is given, much is expected, so we're looking forward to making you all proud with the gains that we're going to show, with the materials we've been given, with the personnel we've been given. And we're very excited about the things that are going on. Our MTSS process is really coming together, having the district-wide team for that, having a district-wide team for PBIS, to really have the support we need to get these things off the ground, and I'm just thankful and excited. Do you all have any questions?
Questions?
No. Okay. Thank you.
Next we have Ms. Wallace with the middle school.
Hey, good evening, I'm Ms. Wallace, Haysville Middle School. I'm not sure I know how to use this stuff. Which button?
I think the red one.
The red one? The right one? Okay. Okay. So I'm going to start with our school-wide reading data, and we use iReady as well as our benchmark, our middle-to-year, and then we will have integrated tests for reading in math, as well as science in eighth grade. So for our reading data through iReady, you'll see, this is our school-wide data, and I did the same thing, I kept this up here, because this data is also for, you will see our tier one and tier two is where we are as far as above grade level or approaching grade level. What we have here is mainly here where I'm looking at informational text. And you'll notice as we go through grade levels, informational text is where we have the largest portion of red in our group. And so, we're going to be kind of talking more about how we can work on our informational text comprehension. So just breaking that down so you can see the numbers, above grade level is 36%, the yellow is 21%. So we're at about 57% that are on grade level, approaching grade level, or above. That leaves us about 43% below. Of that 43%, 33% and iReady will break it even further, are two or more grade levels below in reading. So that's concerning, that we have such a large group overall that's below. When you think about it, though, our eighth graders, their last normal school year was fifth grade. So they haven't even had a full middle school year. So that really is the tale that we're looking at. 47% of students below grade level, informational text alone, so almost half of our students. And then, if you break it down by grade level, you can see even more as far as the hashtag red is two levels below. So you've got the solid green and I'm looking at yellow as, we're going to move those this year, that's not a question, but what we really need to do then is move these reds up as well, because they're definitely behind. And what I want to work on, we talk a lot about MTSS in our instruction, we're using the Ready Reading. We really need to work on our core, our core reading instruction across the board, so that we're also incorporating some other things to work with informational texts specifically. So our strengths overall, eighth grade has close to 60% on or above reading at grade level, but then overall, both seventh and eighth grade have 35% that are two levels below. There are not very many in the middle there. They're either above and on grade level or below. So one of the things we're going to do to address that is some adding some small group reading intervention. You heard primary talk about how important it is to have small group instruction, and in middle school, that's usually a rarity, because you have 30 kids in a classroom. So really, we want to target small group instruction. I actually had professional development today on providing some guided reading instructions specifically for informational text, pulling in our science and our social studies teachers, as well as our literacy teachers, to really work on small group instruction in these areas. So just building an understanding of informational text, what are table of contents, what are captions and graphs and all the data that you look at, and really how to understand that piece of it. And part of that is defining our core at the middle school level of reading, because we should really be reaching 80% of our students with this. So I really want to go back to our teachers, talk about this data, and look at what instructional pieces are we putting in place, and, because we've got to reach more kids than what we have, and make sure that we're getting 80% of our students moving towards grade level proficiency. So as long as we're seeing growth, that's, you know, that's what I look for, and I know our teachers are really working hard. The other piece, going back to that, is vocabulary. We've talked a little bit about vocabulary instruction, if I go back to this slide. And it's also concerning, and I think that's a piece we can really work on as well as a school, in implementing some school-wide vocabulary, talking about just building prefixes, suffixes, Latin roots, Greek roots, will help you go a long way even when you go take the SAT and the ACT. So working on finding some program with vocabulary that I can implement school-wide is also the next step in this as well, so that we can have that. As far as math, it's fairly similar, and we've got, you know, the big group at the bottom, we actually have a good percent at on-grade level or approaching grade level, and then the other, the top tier that are behind. Looking at the breakdown, it's fairly even as well, numbers, operations, algebra, thinking, measurement, and geometry. If I dig in closer or just look at that a little bit more, on-grade level and above grade level, we have about 59% or 60% of students that are there. So we're approaching that grade level or above, the low grade level, we're at 41%. In the three strands, overall, they're about 60%. Our lowest strand is geometry. So that's just interesting, and that's something we're going to have to figure out how to target geometry as a part of our math. And using iReady and their toolbox is one way, but we'll do that. Overall, the breakdown for grade six, seven, and eight show seven and eight have sort of the largest piece that are two levels or below in math. So again, these folk have never really even had a full year in middle school. So it's definitely going to be creating small group instruction and working on targeted skills. Our strengths overall, sixth grade, 66% on or above grade level or approaching grade level, eighth grade 57, seventh grade 55. So we've got some strength there, but both seventh and eighth grade have about 30% of students that are two grade levels below. So what do we have to do? We've got the new iReady curriculum that our teachers are working just to implement this year. We are also going to be defining our core in our math interventions, what that looks like, so that we can then provide these interventions through small group. iReady does provide a toolbox, which we're going to be pulling as well in all of that data. We also provide grade leads, which is a foundational intervention that just gives fundamental math skills to help them do recall. So we're going to be targeting that next. And do you have any questions?
Any questions with comments? Just real quick, I would say that what I'm excited about is that a lot of these numbers are very consistent, and the fact that we have them. We now have a way to measure exactly what the students are supposed to learn, what they've learned, where they are. They will receive a benchmark through iReady three times over the year, so we'll be able to check and see in January exactly how much progress that they've made. And then towards the end of the year, about probably three weeks before they have their EOGs, and that'll provide their teachers with some very targeted areas that they can hit again right before the end-of-grade state exams. For example, informational text. Struggles in informational text. Struggles in informational text? That's been consistent across North Carolina for the past ten years. And the reason why I knew that is because I was a high school principal, and the lowest area on the ACT, which every eleventh grader in the state of North Carolina has been required to take for the last ten years or more, is informational text and/or taking information from charts and graphs. That's the lowest area for eleventh graders across the state of North Carolina. Part of that is due to, when you get into informational text and then taking information from charts and graphs, you get into more scientific technical language, vocabulary. So having a vocabulary program to really systematically teach our kids more of the terms that they're not gonna hear on an everyday basis is going to help with that. But I think it just illustrates the fact that now we can see it in our assessments, the teachers can see it. It's not like a figment of our imagination. We can't, you know, you can't say, "Well, that's just on the ACT." No, you can see it. Teaching reading, both from an informational aspect and for literature, is a K-12 thing. We don't teach kids really how to read in high school. And so I think this just gives us targets to work towards and a way to celebrate successes, and it points us in the right direction. And then, of course, with math, particularly with seventh and eighth grade and talking about weaknesses in geometry and algebra. Seventh grade now is pre-algebra. And so our students, our eighth graders, they never had pre-algebra. And now they're on that assessment, they were asked some areas of algebra and geometry. But remember, they've missed a lot of school in the last two years. And so they haven't gotten that because they don't get algebra skills and geometry skills in sixth grade. So it's right there to see, I mean, it's just good to have a system where we can see it, and now we know where to work.
And I wanna add two things. I didn't forget to mention, we had a meeting with iReady and compared data to their iReady data across North Carolina and with other middle schools across North Carolina. And our data was actually better than most on average that they're getting from their middle schools, sixth, seventh, and eighth. And I compared it all and reading and math, and we looked at their data. So we were percentage points higher. So that was a good thing, because when we looked at that, I thought, okay, we're right along with all the other middle schools in North Carolina, if not just a little bit better. So everybody in our middle school, this has been a struggle. And then I also add with the geometry, that's a lot of vocabulary too. Geometry itself lends itself to just learning the vocabulary in order to answer a lot of those questions. So again, once we add that component in and we really start working on small groups, we have so much room for growth. And I will say, our teachers are working their heart out, learning new ways to do things, learning new iReady math, iReady reading, small group instruction. We've really been pushing forward, so I know that they're up for it.
But just to temper expectations, they didn't get this far behind in one year, and they're not gonna catch up in one year, not a lot of them. It's gonna be a multi-year process. So while I would really like to see all of them bounce right back to where they were, that's probably not realistic. So just bear with us.
We're gonna put every effort into it.
Dale and Mr. Chairman, I've got a question. Well, first of all, I wanna commend all of you principals and our educators and everyone. What y'all have done is just unbelievable. And these two years, we don't, I mean, I'm gonna speak for myself, sorry. As Dale said, we were not expecting that to be called up so quickly. I mean, it took years to get to this point. We know it's gonna take more, but I also wanna put some of that on us as parents in the community. And I wanna know, you know, what do we need to be doing? Because it just doesn't need to fall on y'all. That burden needs to fall on all of us. So I just, I mean, you don't have to answer now or anything like that, but I would hope, you know, just tell us what we need to do. I mean, I know we need to do the reading, we need to do these things.
I can say, every one of us will say, "Read with your child every night, twenty minutes."
I hope we can know that as a community is that what we've experienced over these last two years shouldn't just fall solely on our teachers and our educators. We as a community, and especially parents, have to pull our own weight on this. These are our children that we need to be responsible for.
Well, and part of, you hit the nail on the head on that part of, one of the goals that we're working on in school improvement at each of our schools is how to better communicate with families and the community about how they can support our work from the home. And so, you know, it's one thing to give kids a report card that's got a number on it. It's another thing to do, sort of like what they're doing at the primary school now. They've moved to standards-based report cards, which tell you, as far as the state standards, where your child is related to where they should be at that time of year specifically. And then it gives you suggestions about things that you can do. For example, with vocabulary, never miss an opportunity to teach a kid a new word. I mean, just on your walking around or whatever, you know, out and about, running errands. When you see an opportunity to teach a kid a new word, teach it to them. You know, "Hey, what do you think that means?" And just have a little conversation about that word, and it helps, particularly with technical words that they don't use every day.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Thank you, principals. Let's move into the action item, and we have a recommendation for approval of the Hazel Primary Schools' improvement plan for 2021-2023.
All right, yes, members of the board, Ms. Flemmons and Ms. Thurman, her school improvement team chair are gonna present. We have two school improvement plans to present for board approval tonight. We're gonna do the primary school, and then we'll do the high school. The other two schools will present next month. After this presentation, a motion can be made to approve, or a motion can be made, if you wanna have some more time to look at this before you make a decision, you can make a motion to delay and approve or not approve at the next meeting. So that's entirely up to the board.
All right, well, hello again. I'm learning to work smarter at this and bring someone with me to help present. So I brought Kristy Thurman, our school improvement chair at Hazel Primary School. She has been the chair, they did a two-year cycle at the primary school, and I'm so grateful for that, coming in, you know, mid-summer this year, to have that already in place. And it's been so impressive, the work that this team has already done, the things they put in place, going to standards-based grading, the work they've done towards MTSS. It's really remarkable, and so they've already accomplished a whole lot of things. So we just put a PowerPoint together just to show the things that we're still working on, what we've done in each of those, where we are right now, and then what our next steps are. So I'm gonna let Kristy handle it from here.
I'll be yours.
Okay. I need one of these for my classroom.
One of our main objectives this year is to develop distinct vision and mission statement. That's something that we kind of didn't set in stone, so that's been one of our main objectives. We actually got input from all staff members on this and then kind of looked at it together as a school improvement team. So that's something we are working on. We hope to achieve fully met on at least three key indicators this school year. This indicator should be fully met by December. Says, "All teachers employ effective classroom management and enforce classroom rules and procedures by positively teaching them." What we have done, we've created a PBIS matrix, a behavior matrix. Breez Roster is our PBIS. And Shay, we have two.
Ms. Thurman, real quick, PBIS? Positive behavior?
Behavior.
Intervention?
Intervention.
And support.
And support.
Just for those that don't have all the acronyms.
That's right. Each grade has a reward system in place for positive behaviors. What we are doing currently is creating a rubric for office versus classroom managed behaviors, implementing PBIS behavior matrix, and continually teaching routines, practices, et cetera, to all students. As we've heard several times, I know the second graders that I teach have never had a full school year. So some of even the basic routines, we had to start our year off teaching that. So this has definitely helped. And we're also using our educator's handbook to go hand-in-hand with the office and classroom managed behaviors. So that's been working really good. This goal should be met by January. Instructional teams develop standard-aligned units of instruction for subject and grade level. We implemented last year standard-based report cards in K-2. We created pacing guides in math for kindergarten through second as well, and all teachers participate in weekly PLCs. What I like about the PLCs is that the teachers get to learn. You know, we're learning a lot of stuff. What we are doing, working with PLCs, participating in PD opportunities to improve our instruction, and this year we are creating a pacing guide for language arts for each grade level. So, you know, this helps when you're doing some vertical alignment. This helps if you've got a new teacher coming in, he or she can see what you're working on. This should be fully met by June. The school implements a tier instructional system that allows teachers to deliver evidence-based instruction aligned with the individual needs of students across all tiers. What we have done, we've completed MTSS training modules, created a referral form for exceptional children, established an MTSS school leadership position. What we are doing, using Care Team as a means of focusing on the individual needs of students by exploring academic and behavior interventions, working through NICES, does it say that? NICES course on specifically designed instruction, progress monitoring students who are referred to Care Team and undergoing interventions. And what comes next is in-house training for EC referrals using our tier system, and develop matrix of interventions for reading and for math.
Just real quick, Ms. Thurman, so NCEES, what she called NICES, that stands for North Carolina Educator Evaluation System. That's the system that the entire state uses to evaluate teachers, well, really all education professionals. And there's a piece of that program that provides online professional development for teachers. So if they get evaluated as being low in a particular area, then there's a bank of instructional professional development videos, that sort of thing, that can be assigned to them to complete as a course to strengthen their skills in that specific area of their evaluation rubric. And that specific one, specially-designed instruction, is about, when you have an EC student in your class and they have an IEP that requires specially-designed instruction, how is that different than what you provide to your other students? So that's kind of what it's about.
This should be fully met by June. The school develops and implements consistent, intentional, and ongoing plans to support student transition from grade to grade and level to level. What we have done, kindergarten teachers complete entry assessments yearly. What we are doing, teachers participate in vertical planning meetings. And what comes next, grade-level transition meetings will occur each summer to provide information and share student data. So to work with the grade level that students are going into. This should be fully met by December. The principal monitors curriculum and classroom instruction regularly and provides timely, clear, constructive feedback to teachers. We've created a yearly PD plan based on instructional needs. What we are doing, conduct regular data meetings with teachers, completing walkthroughs weekly to inform on curriculum and instructional methods. What comes next, continue using walkthrough tool, address areas of need in PLCs, and develop PD to meet needs. I personally love the walkthroughs. I know nobody likes to be observed, it doesn't bother me. But I personally like that because feedback is good, you know, feedback is good. We can stand up here all day and say, "Oh, Melissa's a great teacher." But how do you know that if you've not been in the classroom? So that is something Heather's amazing at, and she gives us great feedback.
So real quick, most teachers get two, they're required to get two or three observations every year. Typically, an observation, a full observation is forty minutes or more of their time. And they would typically, like I said, get three spread out over the year. A walkthrough is more of a specific targeted observation where a principal can come in, they're gonna be in there for ten minutes, and they're gonna be looking, say, for three things that day. And they've kind of told their teachers upfront what they're looking for. So if they're not there, then of course, the principal has a right to ask, like, you know, "Well, where are we on this? I didn't really see it." And there may be a really good reason, you know, but that, it just requires you to have that conversation. And it just, again, it allows us to learn from one another and keep pushing forward and having a little bit of more everyday accountability as opposed to just three times a year.
It makes us better teachers, in my opinion, I think. This should be fully met by August of 2022. The L.A.A. school regularly looks at school performance data. I can't see it, and aggregated, sorry, I can't, come on, classes on. Classroom observation data and uses that data to make decisions about school improvement and professional development needs. What we have done, all teachers participate in weekly PLCs, create digital data rooms for K-2. That's something that we already have in place. And this year, we've moved the data for this year into our data room. So let's say Heather needs information on a certain area, she can go digitally and look at everything in one place. What we are doing, target instructional needs through PLCs and in-house PD, use data to drive instruction, use benchmark and progress monitoring data to assess student needs and teacher instructional needs. What comes next, we're gonna work on a pre-K digital data room, which I was excited about, and continue to assess teachers' needs to determine PD needs. This one should be fully met by December. The school regularly communicates with parents and guardians about its expectations of them and the importance of curriculum at the home, what parents can do at home to support their children's learning. What we have done, we've created videos explaining standard-based report cards. Implementation of CSOW is our primary form of communication with parents. What we are doing, working on an interactive digital family handbook, sending midterm progress reports to families, and holding parent conferences twice a year for students and parents. What needs to come next, communicate with parents to determine how we can be better communicators. We used our optional workday at the primary school to have parent-teacher conferences all in one day, and it was amazing. So those of us who were in charge, if you wanna put some of those days in our calendar, that would be great. I think it's great to have those days. Just saying. And here is a list of our, this is our team.
We have a representative from each grade level. We have a parent representative, and everybody that is in administration, counseling, instructional coach, all represent, are all people who are on our set team. So if you'll think back to the very first slide, we wanna have at least like three of those implemented by the end of instructional year, but a lot of the dates seem to be like December and, you know, May. This is ever-changing, a school improvement plan, improvement's never finished. And we know that those dates can change because we may be like, "Oh, we need to add in these action steps," and that might take us a little bit longer. So those are just kind of the end dates for the things we wanna do right now, but with knowing that there's gonna be more added in to come later on. So do any of you have any questions for Kristy or I?
Let me ask a question here on the part of the curriculum where you say in that you have two meetings, conference meetings with the parents in a year.
So we have two face-to-face meetings.
Two face-to-face, per year.
So we had our first one, it was this past optional workday, the eighteenth. We set that day aside for all teachers to hold face-to-face meetings. Some of them did it through like Google Meet or Zoom. So we had the parents come in, we had that in-class data, we had the iReady data, all the data pieces that we had. And the teachers went through and explained what that meant to every parent in their classroom, of kids in their classroom. Had the opportunity to converse, ask questions, talk about behavior, talk about all the things that impacted students' educational, you know, opportunities. We're gonna do that again tomorrow, we have another workday in March, so we figured we'd hit.
Now, that's only a baseline. I may even meet with you three or four times. You know what I'm saying? That's not, I can only meet with you twice. There are some parents that I meet five, six times, it depends on the student and that need.
See, that's why I was asking, maybe is two enough for the year? Or should there be two per semester? Or should there be uh two per semester or, you know, I'm asking what you think. But of course, I know it's little Johnny is being uh, or having a problem in the academic area. You would call, teach, call her.
Absolutely, yeah. Our, our teachers have, some of them, daily communication through CSOW with the parents and that's something that I can see in oversight too. Um, so those were just set aside days. We wanted every parent that wanted to get in and see. And it, it was a great time to explain the data and then hopefully again in the spring, that'll be after our, it'll be between our second and third assessment. So we can see what kind of growth they've had from the beginning to there and then start planning towards the end. You know, are there other things we need to get in place from March towards May? You know, so, but we felt like it was important to take advantage of those two dates that were in the calendar already. We'll take all that you'll give us, but yeah, those report does do that.
Our teachers do a great job, um particularly through CSOW of communicating all the time where it's more like text message, um and there can be check-ins all the time. The idea was to have two days set aside so that parents could plan because a lot of them have to take off work for a time to do it. Um, to really talk about the data and understand where their kids are in reading and math. And a great related thing to that is something that I, I feel like statewide uh we need to do a better job of is teaching kids, kids how to take responsibility for their own learning. Um, and so the, the data we are using is only as good as the effort that the kids put into it. Um, a great way to ensure that they put effort into it is to know that they're going to have to sit down with their parent and their teacher and explain their results. And, and to understand that somebody's going to ask them why on a day-to-day basis they get all of their work done and yet when they take their diagnostic, uh, you know, they're, they're three times worse than they are on a day-to-day basis. If it's test-taking skills, we can work on that. If it's effort skills, then you know, mom can work on that, you know? And so it, it helps, it has to be a partnership. And I think that really helps students take some agency in their learning so that when they get older, they understand that there's always going to be ways to measure their progress and that's what everybody's going to be looking at.
And having these predetermined dates, uh like Mr. Cole said, parents can plan to be there. You know, I know this is already on our schedule. I can already ask my boss, I need to be off this day, that kind of thing. So it is beneficial to have those. Any other questions for us?
Just, I mean, just as a clarification, the vision and mission statement is a work in progress?
It is, yeah, with us being new, relative, I mean, we really are a new school still, less than, less than a year old by, by that measurement of moving in last October, November. Uh, yeah, we wanted to make sure that it is ours, that it embodies who we are as Hayesville Primary School.
Thank you.
Yes, and I'll just say too, I told the schools, uh, because we just got our vision and mission updated at the district level. Last year the state did it. Uh, now our schools are working on it. And I really encourage the principals to take their time with their school improvement teams and really get at the root of as a team, what are their values? What do they believe in? Um, and then mission and vision. So no need to rush, uh, as long as we can get it done by the end of the year, I'll be, I'll be happy with that.
Thank you.
How quickly, um, y'all give feedback to, when you do like a walkthrough or observation? How quickly do y'all give feedback to your teachers?
So when it's a, when it's a formal observation, I like to have that feedback and have a follow-up meeting within the next few days. Um, Mr. Overland taught me a really handy skill on how to create a Google form that when you do a walkthrough, that automatically, as soon as you hit submit, it pre-fills a, a letter that it sends to them immediately. So it just depends on which kind of, so we, we try to do it very timely.
And she's amazing at that.
She does a great job. I'm nosy, I'm in their business.
Thank you.
Thank you ladies.
So, Morda, I will entertain a motion. We have two options here, we can go ahead and prove the school improvement plan as it was presented. Uh, if you want to take the packet that you have and mull over it for a few weeks, you can table that and approve it at the next board meeting.
I'm making a motion to approve it. You have to read it if you want through it.
So we have a motion for Mr. Jones to approve it as it was presented.
And I'll second it.
Respect second that, I'll pay it.
Aye.
Thank you. Then next we have, with high school's school improvement plan.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, before I present the school improvement plan, I wanted to give you an update from day one of the women's golf state championship. Madison Logan, our senior, our Madison, is right now one stroke off the lead in second place. So you all know what a golf fan is. So send her some positive vibes tomorrow on day two. Uh, I think she has a really good chance of bringing home that, that, that trophy. So we're really proud of her either way. She's had a great season. Uh, for the high school improvement plan, let me pick this off. Uh, what we did is we met for two mornings, uh, back in August, August third and fourth. We invited the entire school improvement team and got a little over half of them, considering this was summer days and before school started and people were at the beach and on vacations. We had a very good representation and we workshopped the heck out of our vision, mission, values and goals. And I wanted to share a draft with you tonight. This is still in draft form, our SIP hasn't really done the final approval on this. As Mr. Cole said, there's no big rush. But we did work to align them to the district's strategic plan, which is also aligned with the state's. So here's the draft of our vision. Inspiring, engaging and preparing all students for success in their chosen path after graduation. So, uh, you know, a vision is, is aspirational, long-term, you know, we, where we want to be some way, someday down the road when everything's wonderful, that's our vision, okay? Now, how do we get there? That's our mission. And then again, a draft of our mission. We want to know our students' needs. We want to know them not only by their name and their face, but also by their needs. We want to develop supports for all of our students that will um set them up for success. And we want to do this collaboratively, not just the teacher saying, here's the support, but also working with the parent, working with the community, all working together as a team, alright? So that was very important to the group that met in August was the word community. You're going to see that pop up several times through here. Now, those were actually on day two, vision and mission. The first day, August third, was, was values. And I thought that would go a lot faster than it did. We really, I mean, we spent three and a half hours talking about what do we value in Hayesville High School? What's important to us? And I think that hard work and that those lengthy discussions kind of paved the way for a smoother vision and mission. But here are our values, okay? And there are five of them, here's just the first one. Uh, we value meaningful and challenging instruction that is tailored to the needs of that individual student, alright? Also, a safe and respectful learning environment so that everyone, I'm sorry, so that students can find their voice and become self-advocates. That's a real common one that you see on a lot of school missions, visions, values, is a safe learning environment. But we wanted to say, why do you think that's important? So that kids can find their voice and grow into self-advocates. This was mine, I, I insisted on this one. It's really, it's a, it's a, another way of saying continuous improvement. That, that's what this is getting at. Staffing students who hold themselves to high standards every single day and give their best every day. That's continuous improvement. So um, I think that's really important. We also value individual differences, you know, we're not going to be exactly alike. And we also want to have supporting relationships so that everyone meets their full potential. We want every student in our high school to have at least one adult that they can count on and go to when, you know, when things get tough. And I think we're pretty good at that. I think we're, we do pretty well with that. But there are always ways to improve. And this was Senora Moore's. She was the one, you know, really pushing for the lifelong learning. We feel like, you know, if we're inspiring students, like we said in our vision, then, you know, we're setting them up to become lifelong learners way after they graduate uh across that stage on the football field. So those are our five values and our vision and our mission. Uh, they're still in draft form, we've workshopped them, we've shared them around with different groups. I wanted to share those with you and the public tonight. Uh, if you have any feedback on those, we'd love to hear from you. You can email, call, stop by, uh, we'd love to talk about it with you. Okay, um, the last thing we set up were goals and uh, these were more straightforward. Uh, fifty-six per, fifty-six percent proficiency in math, sixty-one in reading, a graduation rate of ninety-four percent, which is a little bit higher than the last time the state measured our graduation rate. And then a ninety-five percent average monthly attendance. So far we've only completed one full month of school, that was September, and our rate was ninety-one point eight-nine. So we've got a little work to do on that one. Uh, we're still trying to get back into school mode, I think, for, for some of our students who got used to uh their, their, their remote days for the last couple of years. Uh, where we're at right now, here, here, we've come a long way. We, we really have chopped on that tree for the last year and a half at the high school. Just tried to take these, uh, these key indicators, we started out with twelve, just like all the other schools. We completed nine of them, so we're very proud of that. Uh, this first one was kind of my baby, uh, as assistant principal the last two years, effective classroom management, disciplined behavior. And uh, you know, we finally got it. After a year and a half, we decided as a committee that we have met that, that, that indicator. So that one was a good one, uh, for me personally, I guess. Also, MTSS, we do have a tiered instructional, uh, instructional system. We do, uh, we are now able to say, you know, which students are tier one, tier two, tier three. And also what are we doing about that more importantly? What are, what is the intervention that we have planned and how's that going? So we report that back to our school improvement team every month now. So that's one of the very first things on our agenda is how are we, you saw the triangles earlier. How are the triangles looking, you know, how are we doing on tier one, two and three uh with academics and behavior and social emotional learning? Uh, the next one that we've completed was that we're attentive to students' circle, excuse me, social and emotional needs, that's important. We also support the student transitions, beginning with eighth grade uh open house night. Whenever they come over in the spring of eighth grade year and we kind of roll out the red carpet and talk with them and their parents about what they can look ahead to for the next four years of high school, from then up until the evening that they graduate, you know? And then really on into college a little bit too. All of those transitions from, from grade to grade to grade to graduate are, you know, that, that we're there for them. The LEA has support in place. We, that was the first one we completed. Uh, we feel like we have good support from the LEA. If we have uh questions or we need some technical assistance or just bouncing off ideas, uh, this is a good building to come over and talk with about that, so we appreciate that. And then finally, leadership teams meet regularly to review our practices. We have two leadership teams, the school improvement team and then the MTSS team. And they each meet monthly. So in a month we'll have two, two of these leadership meetings that are referred to in this indicator. Uh, three more that we have fully met, B two O three. Collaborative teams focusing on instruction. To, to us, that is PLCs. Uh, we are doing PLCs, we've kicked them off, we've kind of revitalized them this year. Uh, we're, we're, we're being pretty strict with ourselves, we're pushing it and uh holding one another accountable, having honest conversations with one another respectfully. But uh, you know, it, it is all focused on student learning and teachers' teaching and how can we all do better? Uh, C three O one, that one kind of speaks for itself, staff recruitment and retention. We feel like we have a great team and we want to keep them that way. We want to keep our team in place. And then the ninth one that we've completed is the one about communicating with parents and guardians about our curriculum and that in ways that they can support us. So um, we've, those are the nine that we feel like we've fully met. So that leaves us three that we're really focused in on this year. I don't know if we'll get them completed and fully met or not, but uh, that's, this is what we're working on. First is the standards-based unit of instruction. Uh, we've come up with a template for all the teachers to use. We did this last year. And last year we asked every classroom teacher to make one unit plan, just one. And they all did it and they were fine, they did a good job with it. We, you know, it's a relatively straightforward document, but they can put some meat into it also so that, you know, somebody can come in and look through that document and have a pretty good idea of what's going on in that classroom for the next couple of weeks. This year we're asking them to do three more, okay? We're also going to be giving them time to do that in some of our PLC meetings. Not every one, but, but occasionally in PLCs, we'll have time for them to work on those. And then uh, of course, as we've mentioned, uh, social studies has a little bit uh more work to do this year. They're not just doing three unit plans, they're doing unit plans for their entire course of world history, civics, American history and personal finance. So that's our unit plan. Principal monitors instruction and provides feedback. Uh, we're on top of that at the high school. We, we, we don't miss deadlines on these things when, when a teacher has an evaluation due and uh, you know, by a certain date we get it done and we always provide feedback for them. Uh, usually in face-to-face, uh, uh, but, but you know, there would be occasions where a teacher who's on a abbreviated cycle and is doing a great job, uh, we may just have a hallway conversation about that, but we do give them feedback. And then uh, Heather mentioned this, well, I call them snapshot observations. That's the quick hit, the five to ten minutes, pop in, Heather, what are you, what's going on in this classroom? And uh, you know, we try to take an honest look at what is happening in the classroom. And then we give them that automated feedback. We can fill it out on our phones or a tablet and, you know, be in there for five or 10 minutes. We're looking for things like uh, learning target, learning climate. What does it feel like in here? Is it, is it bustling and hopping and cognitively busy or is it kind of sleepy time in there? You know, we, we want the former, so uh, we're, we're looking at those type of things. Uh, what kind of questions are teachers asking of the class? What kind of questions are the students asking of the teacher? And then when we walk out the door, we hit submit, boom, teacher gets an email. So we've done sixty-two of those this year so far. And our goal between myself and Mrs. Rich, the AP, is to do ten a week. So we're, we're in pretty good shape there. Next, analyzing performance data for improvement. These are the things, these first two things are really what we do in PLC meetings. It's not a big mystery, how, you know, how do you get better? Well, you, you find out where students are and if they're not where you want to be, you've got to come up with plans to get them there. So we don't have a, you know, a, a slick uh assessment and progress monitoring type of system. We make our own at the high school. If anybody wants to become the next billionaire, come up with a, a, a high school assessment and progress monitoring system digitally that's aligned to North Carolina standards and you will, you will make a lot of money.
Parents' nights are prepaid, it's just reading math, high school, you've got four, four classes, social studies, four for math.
Oh, I bear that in mind every day. So what we do is we make up our own assessments, the teacher makes up the assessments. Uh, every week we're looking for five to 10 questions. Not something that we want to take up an entire block of instruction, but just a real quick, let's see how we're doing on this week's work. And then the teacher goes back and analyzes that and comes up with interventions. And we're talking short term, like we're not looking for interventions to say, well, in the next thirteen weeks, I'm going to do the, no, what are we going to do in the next week? Okay, how, how are we going to correct this quickly before it really gets far out of hand? And then finally, uh, we will use EVOs to analyze growth. Uh, we get to do EVOs twice a year in the high school because we test before Christmas and then uh, you know, right around Memorial Day. And we've had seventeen LLCs so far, they're going to be, very proud of those. Uh, finally, I just wanted to thank our SIP members. Uh, Ms. Rich, Missy Rich, our new assistant principal, she is the chair. Uh, she couldn't be here tonight, she would have loved to have been. Uh, but uh, she's jumped right in and is doing a fantastic job with that, just picked right up and running with it. Uh, this group, you see the names up here, I won't call them out individually, but you know, I will say that they, they put in a lot of time and energy and dedication to try to make our school better, okay? They are action-oriented. When we get together every month, this group takes action. It, it's not a lot of just, you know, um stray talk or theoretical or wouldn't it be nice? This, this is the group that gets it done, so uh, very proud of them also. Uh, our school improvement team passed our plan unanimously last week. And then our full faculty passed it unanimously between Thursday and today. And I would uh respectfully request uh the board's approval this evening, if you have no questions for me.
Questions or comments, please, over.
Just real quick, Ms. Rich, uh, both she and um, and Amanda, um, Coker. I can never remember her new married name. Amanda Coker, our, our two assistant principals, uh, they cannot be here tonight because they are part of a statewide training for assistant principal called Future Ready Leaders that takes them through their evaluation rubric and uh gives them examples and explanations as to how they can get too distinguished on each of the indicators. So they're, they're driving the rally tonight for their uh-
So they're driving the rally tonight for their meeting tomorrow.
So again, just like with the other school improvement plan, if we can approve this as it was presented tonight or roll it over and we'll get it again next time? So Mr. Caldwell has made a motion that we approve it tonight as Mr. Overland presented.
My second motion?
Second, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Overland. Next, we have, Mr. Caldwell, I guess we're going to talk about a recommendation to end fully remote learning access for students who are failing subjects.
Uh, not next, number twelve on the.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry. Recommendation to change December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one from a regular student day to a remote instruction day.
Correct, so currently on our calendar, on our district-wide calendar, December twenty-second is the last student day before we go on Christmas break. We put together our district calendar last March, I believe it was. At that time, we were not aware that the state was going to institute an implementation of science of reading training for all of our K-five teachers that would be a three-year process. We also did not know that, for example, I think it was Ms. Godfrey mentioned tonight, that when we talk about letters training, that is science of reading training provided by the state. The teachers are required to complete four units of face-to-face instruction per year. Each unit of instruction is six hours of face-to-face instruction. We have a choice of either providing that six hours in one day or three hours each over two nights. We did unit one at night, two, three-hour sessions at night. You can imagine how wildly enthusiastic the teachers were about doing that. But we literally did not have time in the calendar to work it in. And this is what happens when, you know, the general assembly passes a law and pushes something out in August. I really wish they would make decisions in the spring when they're supposed to, but recently, they have made a lot of decisions in August over the past few years, and that puts us in a bind because it's very difficult then to go back. We've already informed our parents of our calendar and that kind of thing. So I am respectfully asking, on behalf of the leadership team and all of our teachers, that we change December twenty-second from a regular student face-to-face day to a remote instruction day so that our teachers can use that to get that six hours of training during the day instead of at night. Historically, a lot of our K-eight students seem to miss the last day before Christmas break, and so that's a pretty tough attendance day for us anyway. I think it's worth it. So what we would do is we would provide instruction for our students through Google Classroom in grades three through twelve and through CSO in pre-K through second. And our students could then complete their work at home like a remote instruction days that we've had in the past. We are going to assign elementary certified staff that are not currently working as teachers. For example, several of our counselors are elementary certified teachers that can be on call to help students if they are at home working and need support. They will be able to contact us, and then we can put one of our other elementary certified staff in place to help support them so that they still have access to help. It just may not be with their teacher, and that will allow the teachers to get that done during the day. I think that would be great for teacher morale, and I think it's a worthwhile change to make. But of course, it's up to the board because that's a change in the district calendar.
So you've heard Mr. Caldwell's explanation and recommendations to change December twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one on a regular student day to a remote instruction day. So any questions or comments?
Question on the middle school and high school. What would they do then? Would you have the kids coming through, would they come into school or?
So, no.
I'm just catching, I understand by the first part, but I have a question on the other parts.
Because our students share buses, in a larger district, each school would kind of have their own buses, and you could kind of have, you could have a remote day for some schools and a face-to-face day for others. With us, all of our students ride all of the same buses, so whatever we do, we kind of need to do for everybody. Plus, we found out through all of the quarantining that we've dealt with over the last couple of years that a lot of our parents that have younger students, they depend on their older students to be the childcare whenever we're out of school. And so, again, if we have school for the high school, but we don't for the younger kids, now parents are scrambling, trying to find childcare because their high school student is their childcare. So we're asking it for everyone, our high school and middle school teachers can provide remote instruction as well. They just won't be in a training, they will be providing support during the day and doing face-to-face conferences through Google Meet with their own students. We won't have to provide other staff to kind of cover for them like we will the elementary students.
Will we still be providing meals?
Yes, we will. Another thing too is December twenty-second for the high school is a makeup testing day because the last five days of the semester are required for state testing. Mr. Overland has set up subject area PLCs at Hayesville High School. So that means that we only have three EOCs at the high school. So we have biology, math three, and English two. So all of our English teachers have the same planning period. All of our science teachers have the same planning period, all of our math teachers have the same planning period. So we're actually going to get our state testing done in three days. So then that leaves the twenty-second and actually the twenty-first as two makeup days in case a student is absent. So if we have a kid who misses a state exam and then misses on the twenty-first, the first makeup day, we will still have staff, or we can send a yellow bus out to go pick the kid up and bring him to school so they can do their makeup test before Christmas break. And we can just do that, several of our teachers have bus licenses that we can still make that happen. But it could be that all of our high school students have tested and we won't even have high school students on campus, so.
Any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve this.
So Mr. Beck makes a motion that we approve that change. It's a couple of seconds.
Yeah, my second.
It's a couple of seconds, all in favor? Thank you. Now then, item thirteen, recommendations to end fully remote learning access for remote students that are failing any subject effectively.
Members of the board, you'll recall that initially, the board made the decision, I think it was in July, that masking was going to be optional, and then after we saw some of the effects in Georgia of that, we decided to require masks because we wanted to make it our goal to have five days a week of face-to-face instruction because we know that eighty-five percent of our kids, that's what they need in order to learn and progress. We've seen that. As a result of that change and decision, we had some parents who were afraid to send their kids to school because of COVID concerns, and the board elected to allow those parents a certain amount of time to request fully remote instruction. And we agreed to provide that fully remote instruction through a third-party vendor, but not by our teachers because we just felt like we stretched our teachers too thin over the last year in order to be able to do both well. And I remain, I still think that that is the truth, that is fact. However, we ended up with about forty-ish kids who went fully remote at the beginning of the year. That has kind of trickled down. I have allowed students whose parents requested for them to be able to come back to face-to-face. I've allowed them to come back face-to-face as long as they signed the form saying that they understood that once they came back, they could not go back to fully remote, they had to remain. So it's tripled down to thirty students now that are fully remote. I collected some data from, I get, we get reports, the principals and I, from our third-party provider of instructions. We get emails, when the teachers email the parent and the student about students not logging in or not getting their work done or concerns about their grades, we get copied on those emails. So I've been seeing a lot of them. So we decided to wait until the end of the first marking period, the first nine weeks, which was last week, and just kind of see where we were. At the primary school, we have four fully remote students, one of them is failing more than one subject. At the elementary school, we have fourteen fully remote students, six of them are failing more than one subject. And at the middle school, we have twelve fully remote students and eight of them are failing more than one subject. There is no legal requirement for us to provide a fully remote option to students or parents. There never was a legal requirement. This board elected to do that because they felt like, you know, at the time that you needed to, and I agree. But we've gone through nine weeks, and I think at this point, I would request or I would suggest that the board should consider rescinding this approval for students that are failing more than one subject and force those students to come back to face-to-face school because they are not succeeding at home. As far as the students that are passing, the board can elect to allow them to remain remote because they're doing well. They obviously either, one, have the self-discipline and self-responsibility to do it on their own, or they have a family support structure at home that allows them to be successful. And I don't, you know, I don't have a problem with that at this point. We've approved it until the end of this semester. So what I worry about is the students that are failing right now. I feel like if we wait until the end of the semester and then we rescind the approval to do fully remote instruction, now they're another nine weeks behind. So I would suggest that with these students, that we give them a deadline of November first to report back to school. And if they do not, then we can work through our community partnerships with the DA's office and do what we need to do to bring our students back to school so that they can learn.
Any questions or comments regarding Mr. Caldwell's recommendation there, sir?
I have some questions. First, when we elected to have these kids, or we said, okay, they can go virtual or not, tell me if I'm wrong, I thought we had decided that after a semester, then they could come back. Now, we paid X amount of dollars, so did we get refunded for the nine weeks? And they got another nine weeks, or are we going to have to just eat it because these children have failed to do the work that they were required to do?
Uh, we will eat it because once you pay the money, you don't get that money back. That pays for access for that, for that, for that semester.
Do we have any leeway or opportunities to have our counselors contact them while they're involved with a third party?
Our principals have been contacting parents and students throughout. They're just not responding, or they're not logging in. I mean, I don't know whose fault it is, it's at home. And certainly, when parents signed up for this, they took on the responsibility of being teachers and principals for their own kids. However, regardless of that, and I don't, I don't mean this disrespectfully at all, just as far as information, these students will be coming back to us, and they will be behind. It's just a matter of how far behind. And I think if you were to ask our teachers, they would prefer to have them back now so they have less of a gap to close between now and the end of the year. As far as our teachers' evaluations, when they, when they're plugged in for the state, the state will take into account the fact that these students were not with our teachers for the first nine weeks. However, as far as our school grades, they will count regardless because we elected to allow them to have this option. And so therefore, it's our responsibility as a school district. But it won't count poorly for the individual teacher. I wish we could get our money back, but we can't. When we signed up for a semester, that's what we paid for, and if a student drops out, we can plug another student in if we want, but we can't get our money back from the spot that we bought because they've now hired a teacher to cover that. And a lot of this with these students, they're just not logging in. And they're just kind of, have disappeared. And we just, we have no control over that. But if we have them, if they're required to come face-to-face, now we, now we have some control.
And so, I'm sorry, and so you're ultimately, we're saying that even the parents are not cooperating with giving us any information on whether they're not logging in or?
Well, I, things I have read is some parents have said that it's, you know, well, it's his responsibility, he wanted to do this, and if he's not, then that's on him. Some have said, have had other answers, that there are a lot of different answers to that question. But the ultimate result is that they're not progressing, they're not learning because they're not logging in and/or they're not doing their work. And that's why I think they need to be forced to come back. At least the ones that are failing, the ones that are passing, that's, that's fine. They can continue till the end of the semester.
Any other questions, Mr. Overland? So there's the recommendation for Mr. Caldwell is to end fully remote learning for those students who are failing by November first. Is there a motion to go with that recommendation?
I'll make a motion if we go on with that recommendation.
Is there a second to that?
My second.
So we've got a motion and a second, all in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Two ayes and two opposed?
I'd just like for them to comment, I understand, and I think that children and students need to be passing, but I'm just honoring a commitment. I feel that we made a difference, and that's just my statement on that.
So, to be in time, I guess, I'm going to take a vote to see if you don't miss.
It does, Mr. General. You know, with all of the data that's been put out there from the principals of Seagun, I think it's very obvious that the last two years of remote learning has not been very good for our, for our students and for their learning. There is, for me personally, there's a part of me that wants to allow those kids to come back so that they do not continue to get behind. And there's also a part of me that wants to be, I'm Mr. Caldwell, uphold that sort of commitment that we've been to offer in remote learning, that an option to students. And I think I'm going to have to go with Mr. Caldwell and say that they chose that path and made that commitment to them. So I would vote to not be in favor of that recommendation as well.
Angel, did you get it?
So next, we have action on whether to maintain or amend the board's current face covering policy?
Even more for, yes, you'll recall, members of the board, you're required by state law to vote on face mask or face covering policy as required by state law twenty-twenty-one dash one thirty each month. First of all, I'm gonna, I'm excited about our COVID numbers. I'm gonna have Adrian pull this up for you. As of today, it's a little small, but you'll see a one and a two down there at the bottom, and a lot of zeros. So the total number of students and staff that are quarantined and/or positive currently, I think, is fourteen. And I think that's really just one positive right now for the whole entire district. So you can see that there's been a substantial improvement, and it has been over several weeks, things have gotten better and better. I'm sure that is due to multiple factors. But as far as just quarantine numbers, I think it has a lot to. Uh, but as far as just quarantine numbers, uh, I think it has a lot to do with the protocols that we have, have put in place. Um, and, uh, and we're certainly proud of that. Uh, there are some changes that I'm, uh, recommending for our, uh, COVID protocols that we, uh, follow regardless of the decision that the board makes on face masks. Uh, those are bullet points on the agenda. Uh, first of all, um, we have new D H N C, D H H S guidance that allows us to treat adult-to-child, um, exposures the same as child-to-child exposures. Uh, before, uh, those were very different. Uh, whenever we had a staff member that tested positive, it, it impacted a lot more students for quarantine than it did for student-to-student. And that was as a result of how they did their research statewide at D H H S last year. They didn't take into account adult-to-student exposures. They only did student-to-student, so they needed some time to do some additional research. Um, they have now, uh, started allowing us to treat everyone the same way. So I would like to make that change because that means a lot less quarantines when we have a staff member that, uh, tests positive. Uh, second bullet, new D H H S guidance allows us to move contact, contact tracing, uh, from social distancing, which is any person that was in six feet of the positive for longer than fifteen minutes in a twenty-four-hour period to physical distancing, which is three feet. Uh, so again, that makes the number of people that we have to quarantine much smaller as long as everyone is wearing a mask. We would certainly like to make that change. Uh, we are also allowed by D H H S to move from a fourteen-day quarantine to a ten-day quarantine protocol. Um, we want to be able to provide that. And we would like to start allowing field trips for our students during the school day, uh, effective tomorrow, as long as everyone wears a mask at all times and keeps, uh, physical distance, uh, which is what we're gonna be doing, uh, during the school day anyway. So those are things that we want to do regardless. Um, as far as face covers, um, I, I think obviously the board can do whatever it wants, but there are kind of three sort of options that, that pop out to me that I just wanted to discuss. First of all, uh, the board could elect to make masks optional effective November first, uh, which would give us a little time. That's gonna change how we do lunches, it's gonna change how we do breakfast, it's gonna change a lot of the duty schedule for the staff. So we'd like to have a little bit of time, uh, to be able to kind of plan for those changes. Uh, and also our principals are gonna be out of the office for two days this week at a state-level training or, or three of them are. So we'd kind of like to have them on hand before we make a major change like that. Um, but what I would like the, the board to remember is whenever we take masks off or we make masks optional, that's gonna immediately move us back to, uh, contact tracing based on social distancing, which is six feet. Um, and it's gonna result in a lot more quarantines every time we have a positive. Now, of course, we don't have hardly any positives right now. We only have one. Um, but for example, if we had a positive high school student, that high school student attends four different classes plus goes to lunch and sits at a table with a group of kids. And so one positive with a high school student can have a pretty big impact on how many students we have to quarantine, uh, from that one positive. And I, you know, that, I, I mean, it is what it is, but I just want to remind the board that just positives become more impactful if everyone's not wearing a mask based on the D H H S quarantine protocols. Um, so if we, if we decided to go mask optional November first, I think the plus side to that is, is an immediate change. Uh, it gives us about three weeks-ish to kind of see what happens before Thanksgiving break. Um, on the negative side is the impact of positive contacts. And also the fact that over the last two years, we've seen every time we have a major holiday where people tend to travel, people mix, they go see family, family comes to see them, boom, our numbers go up. And so, um, I'm a little worried about this time of the year because we've got Thanksgiving and right behind that, we've got Christmas and New Years. Um, and I, the Delta variant has been different because it's kind of moved through the population a lot faster. I mean, I don't know. Uh, it could be we have a lot more people vaccinated now, maybe it's already passed through a lot of people. But that's all maybe, 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 I, I don't know. If we just look at the facts, over the last two years, every time we have a major holiday, our numbers go up. Um, so a s- a second option would be to initiate the first four changes that I've recommended, which kind of opens things up a little bit. Um, and then tentatively plan to make masks optional November twenty-ninth, which is after we come back from Thanksgiving break. Um, and just then we've got about three and a half weeks until Christmas break. We can kind of just see what happens. Um, and if the numbers jump up, we can put face masks back on and, and move back to what we were doing. Um, but if we don't, we can stick with it. The third option, and, and of course, the most prudent choice, um, would be to tentatively set January eighteenth as the effective date for optional masking if the quarantine percentage is still below ten percent of the total student population. And the reason why I picked January eighteenth is because that's fourteen days after we return from Christmas break. So everybody mixes over Christmas, they come back, we get the full kind of incubation period for the virus to see what happens and we're tentatively planning that if everything stays okay, then we go optional mask January eighteenth. Those are the three options that kind of jump out at me. The school district and the staff, uh, our leadership team has already talked about this. We're fully prepared to carry out whatever the board would like to do. Um, but it's a, it's a board decision.
So board, you heard those recommendations from Mr. Cole. We have four of those that are coming from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services with changes to, face governance and quarantine protocols. So those four would be changes that?
We can easily make tomorrow.
Yes. The other choice to add with those four is the options for face governance. And of course, the option is to stay totally as we are, not necessarily set a tentative date as well.
That would be a fourth choice is just keep what you have and not set any kind of tentative date and just wait until the next one. That would be a, a fourth choice.
So, uh, any comments, questions, discussion on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the last time that we made this decision, we had did a survey with the teachers and employees. And, uh, we have some of our principals here, or we have principals, but we don't have our assistants. And I would, uh, really like to know what the teachers, they're there on the front lines with it. And, uh, you know, we all, we want to make sure that every kid and every employee is safe. We don't want to make a mistake. And I feel like, uh, maybe we should, uh, have Mr. Cole to do a, uh, survey and find out again how it looks. And, uh, then if we had to make a emergency meeting, we could. That's my thoughts. Now, the rest of the board, I'd like to know what they would think.
Anybody else, additional comments or questions?
Uh, Mr. Cole, you did say that you met with the leadership team, they saw in this options.
Yes.
But not the whole, I mean, they didn't like?
I, I have not surveyed the teachers, no.
Peer survey or anything like that?
I don't, um, you know, right now I don't have a question about that. Um, I, I, I feel like, you know, if we approve the, the recommendations with the four points and then we, um, just make a decision next month. You know, just, just, you know, stay as we are until next month. That, that would give time to, to do a, a survey and find out, you know, what the teachers feel like they want to do.
And correct me if I'm wrong with my thinking, but unless we had an emergency meeting, Mr. Jones, that would really be kind of what your, uh, idea would be to, to do something for or go to the next monthly meeting, I guess, depending on what happens.
I figured if we could, you know, we got these four options. Therefore, if we have Mr. Cole to do a survey, give him plenty of time. And Mr. Chairman, aren't we supposed to have like forty-eight hours before we can do anything?
We do a special meeting.
We can do a special meeting, so therefore Mr. Cole could do the survey at his, uh, convenient time and then get back with you and then discuss about having a emergency meeting.
So now, just want to make sure that I'm hearing things correctly too, is we could leave things as they are. Basically, masks would still be required until?
Until we?
Until, even up until the November meeting, right?
Mm-hmm.
And then in the time between now and November's meeting, we could get some input from teachers and principals as to what their feeling is on all of this.
While, while we implement these first four changes.
First four changes are, are?
Yeah.
So can I note that as Mr. Jones proposed that Mr. Cole can sort of the staff, I said an option before your meeting, change the mask mandate is that, second to that, y'all can do if you're all favor on that and can you make a motion to approve that we brought on? But can we at least go ahead and include in there that one bullet about making masks optional on November twenty-ninth? I mean, we'll have a board meeting before then, but we go ahead and have that in there? Or is that just a couple of minutes, a little?
I, I mean, if, if the board wished, you could put in a tentative, uh, date such as November twenty-ninth ending. But you're not really planning to make a decision until it sounds like you get the results of the survey of the teachers. So I, I would say just, just make a motion to, um, make these four changes and then to leave, uh?
Leave the mask as is.
Leave masking as is, uh, and then I will just get a survey done between now and the next board meeting or sooner.
Which we're required by law to look at.
You're gonna have to vote on it again anyway if, uh, because it's still gonna be in place. So you'll have to look at it again anyway, November twenty-second. And we can do an emergency meeting sooner if y'all want. We can always be back, but the tentative plan would be for you to look at the results of the survey and then vote on November twenty-second about what you wanted to do. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. I just, uh, with this, you know, we could settle this, kind of like some of the other problems we have or situations that, uh, if we had that emergency meeting, then therefore we would, we got this in place and we find out what the teachers and employee, uh, would like. I don't see any problem. We've had plenty of emergency meetings in the past, so, uh, you know, give him sufficient amount of time and the principals so they can do the observation.
Well, I'm working on, on a related note, I'm working on setting up board training with your board attorney, uh, annual board training with your attorney with a tentative date of November fifteenth. That was one of the things that we, I was gonna have to make sure you guys could make it on November fifteenth. But that could possibly be, you could have a special meeting to make a decision and then have your training after that. I, I didn't want to say it because we haven't really, I have heard from you guys on whether you were even available on the fifteenth, so.
Well, I can date it, but I can do any date, so it's up to the, of people.
I'm giving that, I was gonna suggest we could just go ahead and set that after your start recommendations.
Okay. Would you do that? So then, am I hearing that there's, there is a motion to approve the four?
Right.
Bullet points with the COVID protocol? That, that's part of the motion. And then I guess just leave, leave it there.
Okay.
We made a motion.
I made a motion.
So is there a second to this next motion to approve those four bullet points with regards to the COVID protocol? Second, all in favor? Very good. Do we want to go ahead and set the fifteenth as while we're on that board training? When do we need to talk with, when do we talk with Richard?
Let me, let me make sure, if, if y'all can do it, then I need to get back to him and make sure that date is still open.
Very good. So the next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. And there it is. Board meetings from September twenty-seventh and October the eleventh.
That's in the package.
So is there a motion that we approve the consent agenda? Call on this motion, second.
I'll second it.
Second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion and we go into face session.
Make a motion, we're going in other fashion.
Mr. Jones?
I'll second it.
Mr. Buck, second, all in favor?
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
... Principal presented tonight because it was gold mine as far as giving you something against which to measure where all the pandemic funding is going. Each one had specific evidence that if only we had two of these and we had one or of those, I mean, that gives you a gold mine to go back. And I know there, there was a deadline to allocate that funding, winner winner. Uh, but that, that's a tremendous amount of really valuable data.
That's what we use it for.
There was a lot of community mentioned tonight. He liked, but he said at the high school, the, the community values. And I was, I wanted to ask him, I figured I could tell that. What is that vision of the community? Is it the school community? Is that the community in general? But that was reassuring to see he listed that as a community value. And on the community value, there's a lot of community members, I mentioned before, that if they knew there were needs that would reach out, I mean, there's, there's a lot of old guys, a lot of us, old retirees, rocket scientists, astronomers, there's all kinds of people, that if they knew a specific need, they might stand up and say, I could do that. I want to do a week, please a week, you know, whatever. So if there was some kind of outreach that the school undertook, not just an article in the paper, it's gotta be something. I don't know if it would be in the newspaper, but that could be another gold mine that the school could access. It's much older people.
Well, what I would imagine, when he said community in that, he was talking about their learning community at the high school, so.
Well, I thought he.
And that was because, um, we haven't been able to have community events over the last two years. Normally in a vision and missioning and values process, you would, the principal would then go out to like different, the Lions Club, the Chamber of Commerce, to different areas.
Make sure the community is still there.
Yeah, I know.
Community is still there.
I know.
Thank you.